County Public Schools Superintendent Dr. William R. Height presents Town Hall Meetings to discuss school system goals, priorities, and accomplishments with staff and the community.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you for coming to what is the first of several Town Hall Meetings. And I want to talk first about why we are doing Town Hall Meetings, or why I'm doing Town Hall Meetings. And part of this is really to connect at a more intimate level with staff about the direction of our district, hear from staff with respect to their concerns, and these will be followed. These meetings for staff will also be followed with meetings for the community, because I'm also going to share with them some of the directions, the challenges, and opportunities of their school system. So this afternoon, I'm going to spend a little time, and I want to get started as close to 4:30 as possible, so that we are respectful of everyone's time. So I'm going to spend the first 20 minutes actually going through some information. And before I get to that information, however, I do think it's important to recognize whenever we have board members joining us, and today we're pleased to have Ms. Amber Waller, School Board Member, District Two.
At Large.
At Large, I'm sorry. Oh, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm putting you in the next one. But At Large, At Large Board Member, Ms. Amber Waller, so we're glad to have you here with us this evening. So first, for all of the faculty and staff who are here, and all of the administrators, all of the support staff workers, we really haven't had a chance to say thank you for the work that you've done. And why am I thanking you? Well, one, I do that every time I get in front of individuals, because I think it's so critically important to show appreciation for people. But two is because we've just experienced over the past three years some pretty significant challenges fiscally, and those challenges have impacted us all. And when you've had the experience of having all 18,000 individuals inside of a school system go through furloughs, many individuals be reclassified, other individuals be lose positions, then that's pretty tough for a system, particularly a system our size. And so part of this afternoon is really to have an opportunity for me to thank you for your work. We understand how challenging this has been to everyone, and how critically important it is for all of you to be forward-thinking and facing forward, because I do think that even though we've had these challenges, we've also experienced one of the smoothest openings we've had in some time in the county, at least during the time that I've been here. And we are pleased that we welcomed 128,000 young people back to school this fall, and that enrollment number represents the, a number that is a little higher than last year, but right at our projection this, this year. And that's important, because we're no longer declining in enrollment, and that decline of those declines would mean that we would lose more money. And this is not a time where we want to be losing any more money. But, so, thank you for your work that you've done, and thank you for being here, and hopefully we will, it'll take 15 minutes to go through the presentation, and then I want to actually hear from many of you and have an opportunity to respond to you directly. And we are beginning the process of really communicating our work. And part of this communication is really to better define our core work as a school district. Four years ago, we had a group that came in to work with us, and that group came in really to help us build a performance management plan. And the first part of the building of that plan was really to determine what were initiatives in and across our school system. And it was astonishing to me that, at the time, we had over 100 initiatives going on, over 100. And many of you know and remember a lot of those, and you know and remember what that felt like. So we've been able to really adjust that down, in some cases, later, to 70, and then we related to adjust that even further and into the 20s. And now we have five core goals inside of our school system. I'm going to talk about those in a minute. But part of this conversation this evening is also to make sure that we're focused on our most critical work, and that's educating the 128,000 young people who come to our schools every day. And to understand that although we're going through difficult fiscal times, and if the state is going through difficult fiscal times, if our local county is going through difficult fiscal times, and 91% of that revenue comes from the state or the county, then it's only a matter of time before those things happen to us as a school system. And we want to make sure that regardless of those things, we're educating our students and providing with the opportunities to be successful beyond high school. And that's our number-one priority, and that will remain a number-one priority, is to ensure that all of our students are receiving a high-quality education with opportunities to engage in their learning environment, so that they have opportunities beyond high school to go into college or a career. So part of what the first slide will show you is that we are mandated by the state to submit a master plan every year. And that master plan for us is really to report on our progress, and that is our progress versus plans that we've had in place in other years. It also allows us to address all of the strategies or any actions that we have associated with the master plan. It's called the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. Each school has a copy, and each school does their own plan based on where they are and their performance data. And as you know, the State of Maryland has a template for this, and that template really usually resorts in over 600 pages of information that we provide to them. So if individuals actually saw our final Bridge to Excellence Master Plan, then you would see that it's 668 pages long. But that's not what each school does. And those plans at the district level and at all of the schools represent a comprehensive plan for our system. And it is submitted, it will be submitted to MSDE soon, and it will be approved later in December, and then that plan moving forward would be the plan from which we operate inside of our school system. So it's called our master plan, and it's, most plans across the state and across the country are done this way. The difference in Maryland is that it's actually legislated, so it's a statutory requirement to do the Bridge to Excellence Master Plan. So inside of our new master plan, or this year's master plan, we want to make sure that there are five goals represented across their system. And you can see those goals here, with the first goal being the center of our work, and that first goal is high student achievement. And all of you received a little brochure like this, and we're calling these goals our Strive for Five Goals. And these are the things for which we will strive this year to ensure that we have high student achievement, which is the first. And in order to do that, we understand that we need highly effective teachers in front of our students, we need safe and supportive environments, we need strong community partnerships, and we need to take care of our resources by having, making sure they're effective and they're used efficiently as possible. So part of this slide, this next slide, this represents the strategic initiatives, and I also have a leadership team, and that team is called Executive Cabinet. And inside of Cabinet, we also have our work to do that intersects with some of the work inside of our strategic master plan. And then there are other programs, and there are other structures, and there are other initiatives and work that is going on, that are going on throughout the system. So our strategic initiatives, as you can see, inside of the first goal, Goal One, is high student achievement. And we know that inside of high student achievement, there's still some work to do in order to ensure that all of our students are achieving at a high level. And most of these strategic initiatives are a result of the, our ability to analyze data that has just occurred. And the data that we received from last year's performance, the data that we will receive throughout this year, will really guide us on what becomes our strategic initiatives in order to have high student achievement. So as you can see here, our most recent data indicates that we have to really look at HSAs, and how do we structure ourselves to ensure that our students are performing at a higher level on the high school assessments. We also know that many of our schools that did not make AYP, did not make AYP because of special ed subgroup. And so what does that mean? That means that we have to make sure we are addressing special education as a key component of our work. And as you can see at the bottom, the inception of portfolio schools, and I want to explain what portfolio schools are. Portfolio schools are non-traditional types of models. So people would think of sometimes alternative or non-traditional programs for students who had not been successful at the high school. Others could be schools that are offered on college campuses, could be schools that are offered at varying hours during the day at different locations. So those are a set of portfolio options that will also become a part of our comprehensive package. Then as you go over on the far left, and you can see that there are other programs and projects that are also going on inside of the system, while we have our first goal, high student achievement, and some of the critical initiatives in place, there's also other work that's occurring inside and around our system. One, and many of you may have heard about this, but this is called, it's a term, it's called 1003G, and it's under School Improvement. And it was inside of President Obama's work to really turn around low-performing schools. And it was money that was appropriated for low-performing schools. As a matter of fact, it was a grant, and the grant was $22.6 million, and that grant was allotted to Prince George's County to turn around our four lowest-performing schools, and they all happened to be middle schools. And so that turnaround work becomes another project or program. Performance Management, many of you have been involved in that process, and we also have a grant with the National Commission on Teaching of America's Future, and that will be work that will likely be a subject or product of a Race to the Top. Highly Effective Teaching, and I'm using this, the same chart to show this once again. Human Capital Reform, and in order to have a highly effective teacher, in order for all students to achieve at high levels, we know that the most important thing is to ensure that they have a highly effective teacher in front of them. And I'm here to tell you that we have a lot, many highly effective teachers already in our system. Why do I say that? I say that because even with all of the challenges that we've had inside of the system and revenue challenges that we've had, one thing that we continue to do is that show, and that's to show progress almost in every category, with the exception of special ed, particularly at the middle school, in performance. And we've shown those increases in performance even with the challenging times that we've had and the reduction of individuals from our, from our rosters. And so this highly effective teacher, or Human Capital Reform, is really to make sure that we're continuing to build and develop ourselves to build and develop our students. And this is from teachers to individuals transporting students, to individuals feeding students, to individuals who are supporting our schools, maintenance, clerical, every individual. It is how do we continue to develop ourselves in order to develop our students? And inside of that, we have a couple of priorities inside of Cabinet, and you can see those. Those are around instructional leadership and having a different human capital strategy. And human capital strategy really is how do we staff schools? How do we staff schools that have differentiated needs? How do we make PD a function or a response to the needs of teachers based on the performance of their students? And how do we evaluate individuals to help build their capacity? And then you can see other programs and projects that are going on inside of highly effective teaching. Safe and supportive schools, that was Goal Number Three, and you can see some of those interventions that we're talking about, and many of those things around our partnerships that we can do with the Prince George's Mental Health Initiative, work that we can do in partnership with agencies at the state level and the county level, and a walk-in student counseling and family support centers. You see that we have other systemic, systemic supports, and some of those things are what we're attempting to do to really address the issues of discipline in and throughout our system, and how we can actually use technology as a means to do that. Strong Community Partnerships, that becomes, that's the fourth goal, and inside of that goal, you can see there are some strategic initiatives, many of those are special ed reform. A lot of work is going on here to really create advocates, particularly advocates who are parents, and how do we work with community organizations to partner so that we're preparing parents to be better able to help their young people be successful in school. And then many people have heard about the secondary school reform. And the secondary school reform is really a placeholder for Phase Three of the Comprehensive Boundary Review. In Phases One and Two, we did all elementary and middle school boundaries, and then we were coming to Phase Three, which were the high school boundaries, but we thought we had to stop, and we could not use the same process we used through elementary and middle. And it's a reason we could not use that same process, because parents were beginning to tell us that you have seats available at these schools because they don't have the programs that we're interested in, or our students are interested in, or they don't have the reputation, or quite frankly, those schools are not as good as the ones that are overcrowded. And so part of the secondary school reform was really to look more comprehensively at all of our secondary programs, and it's also to realize that preparation for high school has to begin before students enter high school. It can't begin once students enter the ninth grade. And that's a conversation we have to start much earlier when students are in later elementary and in middle. And as you can see on the right-hand side, there are business partnerships that are part of the Strong Community Partners, parent and community outreach, parent advocacy centers, and we're opening the third center tomorrow, and we've opened three parent academies already, and one is up in Laurel, the other is in Hyattsville, which also is our first bilingual parent academy, and the third one will open tomorrow in Beltsville. And those academies are really where parents, schools are partnering with community organizations to help inform parents, to better prepare parents to help their students. And finally, Effective and Efficient Operations, and many of you have heard about the performance management process, many of you have heard about PMAP, and many of you have heard about performance basing our budget. And all of those are ways to look at how can we operate more efficiently, given the fact that we're in pretty stringent financial times? And how can we operate to really generate revenue in order to make sure we don't have to lay people off, or furlough people, or reclassify people in the future? And so all of this is with a view towards increasing our emphasis and changing the profile of our graduates. And we now want graduates, and I always challenge my team that want us to think about the year 2017, and I want us to think about the young person who will graduate in 2017, and how the profile of that young person should look different. And when I think about that, I think about the young man that I always talk about at Sutland High School, who was working on a student-built house. And last year, as a junior, that young man finished his work in carpentry, set for the carpentry assessment, was successful. He's going into a senior year this year. He has no desire to go to college. I ask him what he's going to work on, are you going to continue in carpentry in a student-built house? He says, I'm going to continue in a student-built house, but since I already have my certification in carpentry, I'm going to try electrical this year. And I want to finish my senior year with a certification in electrical. And so think about that for a second. It's a young man who is not interested in going to college, but will finish his high school experience in our county with a certificate in carpentry and electrical. That's the type of profile we're talking about if we're talking about young people who are college and career-ready. Or the young lady I met at another high school who indicated to me that she's already taking most of her classes that she can take at the high school. So she's taken, she has a full load at the community college, and that she was coming back to her high school during her senior year, which is this year, and she's getting ready for where she's going to attend school next year. So naturally, I said, where are you attending school? And she says, well, I'm planning to go to University of Richmond. I said, well, that's interesting. I used to teach at the University of Richmond. She says, well, I mean the one in the UK. So I thought that's the profile of young people that we want to graduate from our system. A young lady who wants to go off to the Ukraine and be educated, and then go on to Oxford to be educated. And if a child wants to do that in their system, it should be no barrier that keeps that child from reaching that, that aspiration. So we want to look at this whole new support structure for a profile of a graduate, and at work inside of secondary school reform, where we're expanding academies at the high schools, where we're increasing STEM experiences for high school students, but not just for high school, because students just don't learn that at the high school level. They begin learning it in middle school, and they begin learning it in elementary school. And we have new partnerships now formed with NASA Goddard, Lockheed Martin, Aerojet, and we were talking to the colleagues at Aerojet, and they wanted to bring a group of students to the place where they launch rockets or missiles, and it's jet propulsion, and they do a lot with rocketry and jet propulsion. And they said, bring a group of students out to sea at rocket-launching facility. And we were talking about the grade levels that should be coming out, and they said, we should see elementary students. And one of the individuals who was with me said, well, I'm not sure we want second graders launching rockets. And the people from Aerojet said, why not? Because that exposes students to those types of experiences that they may then choose as an avocation, but we would never know if they never had that exposure. And so expanding the types of opportunities so that they will have those experiences is extremely important. This is also expanding our career and technical educational options, but not only expanding those options, but requiring students to end with something that they can use in the world of work or at an institution of higher ed. What do I mean by that? It's the kind, how many kids do we have enrolled in CTE courses? Is it 8,000? 16,000. 16,000 students enrolled in a course or more in career and technical education. I'm not putting you on the spot, but I know you know this answer. Two years ago, how many students sat for the assessment in one of those areas?
Two years ago, we probably only had maybe about 60-some students of the graduating cohort. And I will tell you, in this last year, we had somewhere in the neighborhood of 430-some-odd students that sat and earned certifications.
So when we're talking about that, and when we're talking about the importance of career and technical education, we hear that all the time, expose students to more experiences in career and technical education. And I think that's important, but I also think it's important that if students are going to spend their time in one of those career pathways, that they come away with something. And so if young people are sitting in cosmetology classes, why not sit for the cosmetology assessment? If young people are in the Cisco class, why not sit for the certification? If people are, if young people are in plumbing, or HVAC, or masonry, then all of those areas have an assessment. And we want our students to end with something that they will be able to use, either to enter college, as I indicated before, or the world of work. So it does us no good if 16,000 young people are sitting in these classes and 60-something are sitting for an assessment. That's not the product, and that's not the profile that we want. We want to talk like I was talking about the young person from Sutland. So with that, I said it was going to be 15 minutes. That went about 17 minutes. I apologize. Question or comment?
Dr. Height, I wanted to know specifically, has your team outlined how you're going to utilize the Race to the Top? I know a lot has been talked about, the middle schools, but are there any other possibilities to use funds in a, perhaps a way that maybe you cut funds from something else this school year?
Yeah, I'm glad you asked that question. Thank you for that. And the question's really about Race to the Top, and as you know, we were a state that was successful, one of the few states across the country that was successful in the Race to the Top grant. And it means that Maryland will receive $250 million for things that they can use inside of why that money, or why those monies were created. So quite frankly, there are four areas in which you have to focus on with respect to Race to the Top. One is the effective teachers, effective leaders, and I'm putting those in one category. That was one assurance, so you have to actually create plans that deal with effective teachers or effective leaders. The other is a common core, which means a curriculum that is common across states, not just the state curriculum inside of Maryland. You have to have a data system to collect that information and to be able to tie student performance to the evaluation of adults, and tie PD to student performance. And so a data system that must be in place. And then you have to have a structure for turning around the lowest 5% of your schools, so it has to be school turnaround. So those are the four areas in which you could use those monies. What's interesting is that it was really important at the state level that we not construct a dynamic where we were using those funds to support FTEs that were still there once that money went away. So it's one thing they, it's one thing to add positions, it's another thing to add positions when you know the money is going to go away. And one of the things that was really clear from the governor and the state superintendent is that we cannot construct a situation where we're adding FTEs. The other thing is, it's like Title I money, so you actually can't use it to supplant services that you're already delivering. And so unfortunately, it has to be in some of those areas. Now, it sounds like a lot of money, and it is, for the state, but then when you divide it out over the period of time, and it's a four-year, it's a four-year proposition, so it means that we will receive 22, 21 million, right? Is it 21 million? 21 million, and so that gives us an amount over four years or five years. And that, it's roughly about $5.6 million a year, 5.4, something like that. And we have $13 million in requests. So what we're trying to do is really talk about how we can get the biggest bang for the buck inside of what we hope to do or accomplish with those monies. One is to make sure that we can finish the data warehouse, the other is structures for staff development, particularly around teachers, another is incentivizing teachers to work in some of our high-need schools. So we're really talking about how we can use those monies inside of work streams and strategies that we already have in place. It's a great question. Other questions or comments?
We had a question come up, and my students have been discussing it this year, the students with the kufis, the kufis, the Muslim head, and what that really means. And in talking with my students, many of them are of the opinion that it is just another symbol for gangware, and that the students are not using it for religious purposes, and that it is being used to create another gang. And we're very concerned, they're very concerned, especially our Muslim students are concerned because they see it as disrespect.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for that question. And the kufis, that, in fact, I saw this where it was a problem at one of our high schools. I was actually there when they had a problem. I was actually there when they had a problem with that. And we've asked for our Office of General Counsel to give all of the principals some help in how to address this issue. Now, they were researching a lot of this, and there were some clear things. I'm not sure you guys received that yet?
We received the letter, and as the letter said, that we had to allow them to wear it. But I have to, I go with...
My staff member is saying is that while we understand that we don't want to compromise students' religious freedom, it really is considered gang activity. So, where we were trying to promote religious freedom, we're actually giving the students an avenue in which to come to school with the headgear on. And it's creating, at least in this particular school, somewhat of an unsafe environment because now they're ganging up.
Yeah. And inside of that letter, I thought it was also some clear actions about what we could do if we suspected that it was something other than a religious issue. And so, we just have to make sure that we're either giving you the help to do that, or if it's become an unsafe situation, then we can apply something that's more stringent than just the protocols that we put in the letter. But I'll work with you, Angelique, on that because we have some ways to think about it, and we've actually addressed that at another school because it was a problem. Thank you for bringing that up.
Hey, Dr. Height, how you doing? I had a question in regards to also safe and orderly environment. One of the questions I have is what is the school system looking into, how we should deal with kids? Because we try to reduce suspensions, but when you work with the PPW and other people, their hands are tied as far as other avenues to require students to serve some other type of punishment activities. Is the school looking at mandatory or giving the PPW mandatory things like requesting counseling or anything like that so we can have all the avenues to deal with disruptive behaviors?
Yes, and thank you for that question, Mr. Smallwood. What, one of the things that we're doing, and there's a group now that's actually working on just that, and it's with a general counsel, it's with board counsel, it's with their student services, and we're actually working through every scenario. Couple of things we did this year is we added 60 seats in some of our non-traditional options for students who are chronic behavioral problems. But these are not just behavioral issues. So, there's some students actually who are not doing well, or don't feel like they can do well in a comprehensive school setting. So, we actually have to give students other ways in order to, to express themselves other than just in a comprehensive school. Here's the other, here's the other part of that. We know that it is a small percentage of students that you're probably spending most of your time on. And how then do we deal with that small percent? That's different than addressing suspension. So, if we have, last year, we had 17,000 suspensions in a system our size. And that's lower than it was a couple of years ago, but 1,000 more than it was the previous year. And so, we still have to, we still know that we have to have students in school in order to educate them. But by the same token, we have to change the environment for that small percentage. And they have to be, they have to be situations where it's not an option, it is a change. It says, if you want to continue in our school system, and because of what you've demonstrated or exhibited over the past, whatever, then here is your, here's where you will be educated. And we have to put instructors in place to do that. But we have a group working on that right now.
My question also deals a little bit about the safe and orderly environment. I believe I heard you say that the high school boundaries was put on hold for this upcoming school year. I wanted to ask, what is being done to alleviate the overcrowding at Charles Herbert Flowers and Dr. Henry A. Wise, which Largo is impacted with our numbers? And our parents in our community is of a mindset that the age of the school directly correlates to the effectiveness of instruction in the school. And is there a capital improvement plan on the books for upgrades to schools as old as Largo High School or other schools that will make more attractive the community, you know, sending their students to Largo? If it's not going to be a boundary change, then there needs to be some type of other improvements to the building as far as technology and auditorium, maybe second gym, other facility improvements that need to be made to make the schools that don't draw the upper echelons of students back to their community school.
So, here's some points of data, here's some points of data. And I'm glad you asked that question because there are schools that are newer than Largo that Largo outperformed last year. And so, the, the age of the building has very little to do with the type of education students. And so, what becomes, what becomes a greater challenge is how do we tell that story? And how do we make sure parents are aware of the high-quality things that are going on here at Largo and at other places across the county where students are doing extraordinary things? So, that's the first thing. So, the second thing is, I'm glad you asked about the boundaries because we, we wanted to take a more comprehensive approach to that. And what we know is that if we plan to open several new programs, one is going to open next year, it's called Middle College. And Middle College will have, Middle College will have students that enter their freshman year, and in four years, they're finished with a diploma and a two-years associate's degree in health sciences. So, we know that once that program, and we're going to add 100 students a year, so we know that that program, at, once it's, once it grows out, it'll be near here. It'll be near here. The, but what we know, once that program grows out, that that's 400 students. So, that we know. We also know that we're going to have an IT school. And at the IT school, those students will learn about IT and those structures and supports, and they will actually provision and repair and wire and do everything across our system. It would also be the place where we train individuals to use that equipment. And it would be all done by our students. We know that will top out at about 400 students. And it's the reason I'm talking about this because that means that 800 students have come out of the mix for all of the other high schools. And so, if we do a boundary change first, and then we adjust programs, then we're going to likely have to come back and make adjustments based on what students select in and out of. And those are just two examples, and I only use those examples because those are programs that will happen in the near future. We have other programs like the continuation of immersion that could happen. We have global studies. We have social justice. There are a lot of programs that will become a function of those academies where students will self-select into some of those programs. And if 2,000 students move in our county, it has dramatically changed the seats that are available in order to boundary. And that's why the boundary discussion is, is put on hold until we're having that. The third, and to your point, is that we have an analysis of all schools in the county. The board commissioned a study, an engineering study, it's called a 3Di study. It's analysis of all of the conditions of all of the schools. And Largo's in pretty good shape. And it is, and I know you know that, I mean, but it is, so it's not, so the attraction really becomes the experience that the students are having in the school. And I think based on that experience, people will begin to say, well, wait a second. What do you mean that students are leaving that school and going this place or that place? Oh, wait a second. What do you mean, students are having that exposure to that program? And then, that's going to eventually start drawing individuals back. As I said before, I love the schools that you mentioned because Largo outperformed them last year. So, great question. Thank you. Congratulations too, by the way, to all the Largo staff members who are here. I know it's quite a few, but congratulations on the performance.
I'd like to make a push for Largo to be considered the location for the Middle College program. Largo is under-enrolled by about 400 students. I think the seat capacity is 1736, and we are about at 1350. We already have a partnership with Prince George's Community College with the EMC3 grant. And as you're well aware, we have one of, we've been recognized by College Summit as having a college-going culture. We are in direct proximity to Prince George's Community College. So, I would just like for Largo to be considered for the location to have the Middle College program. You don't have to build a new school. You don't have to renovate and create classrooms. We have space here, and we have instructors who currently work at Largo who also work at Prince George's Community College. So, I would just like to make a, I don't know, a wish or desire for Largo to be considered for the Middle College program.
That's how you're supposed to advocate for your school, Angelique. Thank you for that. Question up here?
Thank you, Dr. Height. My name is Vinida Marshall, and I used to work at Sutland when I first began teaching. And we had something that I believe is the direction you're headed in, and there was a vehicle called smaller learning communities. And I don't know if this is a piggyback on, on what we did over there, because you mentioned Cisco. We had different schools, School of Transportation, we went to the MITRE Corporation, and we targeted the students who were not planning to go on to college. And so, those were the other vocationals, vocational programs. And I thought it was a really good idea, and I'm just asking, is that something that we're incorporating in the county? Similar?
It's fashion after that. We're, we have a small learning communities grant right now. It's a $16.8 million grant from US DOE, and we have several schools working inside of the small learning communities. But I want to emphasize that this is more than just about offering different programs. This is changing the experience for students who are in high school and in middle schools in preparation for high school. And so, part of it is really changing structures for students, changing beliefs about them, changing experiences before they get there so that they are prepared. Making sure the transition is really important. Really talking about, you know, years, a couple of years ago, we did the individualized learning plan, and it got all convoluted with just like a whole bunch of stuff. But it really, if that's going to work, we should really be talking about what do we want for this young person when they graduate in four years, six years, eight years, nine years? And that should be the document from which we speak about every student in our system.
Thank you.
I introduced Ms. Waller, our at-large board member before. Ms. Pat Fletcher has also joined us. Ms. Fletcher is school board District III. I got that right, Ms. Fletcher. And so, thank you for joining us as well.
The ILP and the question you asked, Mr. Smallwood, about career tech, they both feed off of each other because when, and I sit on a task force, because I know it was just real crazy for you all to do the individual learning plan. So, they're coming up, the task force is coming up with a great idea on how you do that. But that individual learning plan, say, a student says in kindergarten, I want to swim with the fish. And then, in the fourth grade, she says, I want to study sand. And then, in the ninth grade, she says something else, but she ends up wanting to be an oceanographer. That gives us an idea as to what type of courses we will offer that child. In addition, that individual learning plan will be like a book because in that child's senior year, then we can say, look at it and say, did we provide this child with the courses that they wanted? In addition to the career tech, and Dr. Height is working on some stuff with career tech.
I actually have two children in, in the system who have special needs. What amount of this $23.5 million will go towards assisting with high-functioning children? Because right now, there is no program that the county is offering that addresses the need of a child who is a high-functioning child like my child. So, I want to know, what are we doing and what portion of this money is going to be used to set programs up in our public schools that are smaller class sizes that may address kids with disabilities that are very high-functioning?
Thank you. Thank you for that question. And a part of this was, and I think you were at the board meeting the other day, and I thank you for being there. And you saw a presentation where we're really talking about this notion of increasing our ability to get a sense of the cognitive demand from students and the cognitive abilities, which means that that takes a different instructional approach for our adults who are working with their young people. So, right now, we're already beginning to develop this notion of cognitive demand, problem-solving, critical thinking with our staff members. Now, special ed has received a good bit of money already under the ERA funds, which was the stimulus money, in order to help produce professional development. And our curriculum department, Dr. Dwayne Aubregas, is actually working with special ed individuals, and we're beginning to really build instructional strategies around delivering that content to the multiple-mode learners inside and around our system, particularly in special ed.
As a follow-up to that, Dr. What do we do now? Because right now, I am trying to find a school that can meet my child's needs.
Right.
And there's, with the schools that I do find, if they're not on your website or part of that same curriculum, my child is suffering right now. So, what do I do? How do I get involved to give some input? What do we do?
So, I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you what you do. See the gentleman right behind you? Dr. Wayne Aubregas. He's waving. He's waiting to talk to you about what you can do to, to address this issue right now.
Okay, thank you.
You are welcome.
My name is Linda Verrill, and I live in University Park, Maryland.
Yes.
I have a son in the eighth grade at Heightsville Middle School, and I really appreciate you giving us this opportunity tonight. I'm concerned about the proposed boundary changes for the county high school clusters. I really think it's great that the county wants to give improved opportunities for students across the whole county. But I have some particular questions. I don't expect that you can answer them all tonight.
Okay.
But at least to know that me and a whole bunch of other parents are concerned. We want to know how the county, how the overall goal of improving and equalizing the schools, how will that be measured? Also, how will the county evaluate quality programs such as, you know, the ones that are in the best county high schools? You know, before you actually implement those changes? So, again, I don't expect you to have the answer right now.
Sure.
But we are very concerned, and we want, we, I really think it's great that we're going to have great high schools all over the entire county, but I, you know, I just can't wait for that to happen, and I hope that it happens fairly.
Sure. Great. And thank you for asking that question because it actually gives me an opportunity to respond to a lot of individuals who think that the secondary school reform is something that is not. And so, I'm going to have an opportunity to, to address that. First and foremost, we're looking, first and foremost, we had two phases already, phases one and two. It dealt with all of the elementary and middle schools. And what we heard from parents in phase one and two was really that, you know, this is a, this is really a conversation also about the quality of schools. And so, we have to talk about at some point the quality of all schools. And so, when we got to the, to the phase for high schools, instead of just doing a wholesale boundary review, we wanted to go and look at a comprehensive restructuring of our academic program and delivery structure. And so, what you see are clusters. And those clusters are only to define for us seat availability. That's it. So, what they're not defined as is changing the boundaries or who can attend what yet. And I want to clarify that. So, here is why we did that that way. It's because if we opened in phase one, a middle college that is slated to open next fall, Middle College is a program where we will have an eighth grader enter high school, and that eighth grader will begin their ninth grade year on the college campus. And at the end of four years, they finish with not only a diploma, but a two-years associate's degree in health and sciences. And so, that's Middle College. And so, we know that at the end of that program, there are 400 students in Middle College. So, we also know that at, at some point, we're going to open an IT high school that will actually work to refresh all of our equipment. an IT high school that will actually work to refresh all of our equipment, they will image our equipment, they will repair our equipment, and they will be students. And it will train students to work in those fields. And we know that, okay, let's say hypothetically, that student, that school will be 400 students. So that's 800 students out of our total high school population right now. So it doesn't make sense for us to adjust boundaries and then offer programs of choice. What makes more sense is really talking about how we can put clusters across and throughout the county so that academies are available for all, for children irrespective of where those children live. And then come back later and make adjustments based on who decides to self-select what. So it doesn't change the VPA program at Sutland, it doesn't change the science and tech program at Oxon Hill, Flowers, or Eleanor Roosevelt, nor does it change who gets to get into those programs right now. So that's a part of your, hopefully that helps. So the other part of the question is how do we evaluate? So one of the things we did and one of the reasons it's taken so long is actually we wanted to talk to students and we wanted to talk to parents. We've talked to over 2,000 parents, we've talked to a lot of students, I don't know the number. And we have had group meetings all across and we've had businesses, organizations, groups like NASA Goddard and other partners. And they are actually helping us with the construction of some of these academies. But we also want the academies to be interest-based, which means these are things that people are looking for. All right, that's on one side. On the other side, we've also done an analysis of those jobs or those fields that will need employees in the next 10 years. And so we're allowing those fields to really define the types of academies. And I'm sorry, that was a long answer to a short question, but I just wanted to be comprehensive about that.
My name is Lamar Mayo. I'm actually an engineer captain in the Army Reserves.
Fantastic.
I'm also a graduate from North Carolina A&amp;T in engineering. And I'm a father of four here in PG County, of course. My son goes to the Possibility Prep Academy right down the street. And I am extremely concerned. I was, I was actually deployed when I found out about my son being able to have this opportunity. I just got back from Iraq. And I was excited to hear that he was going to this STEM curriculum, okay? And I was, I actually made it home in time for the school to open. I actually saw you there, Lieutenant Governor and all that. And I was, after the school started, very disappointed in terms of the crop of students that's been, that's gained, that's been gained at that school. Now, I guess the first question I have, and I'll follow up, is was the lottery that we entered to get my son to that school opened up to alternative schools?
Fantastic. The lottery, so the lottery is open up to all students. So the lottery that, if a student signs up for the lottery, that's to all students. It's not just to alternative, it's not just to comprehensive, and the same holds true for the other lottery programs. The lottery is open up to all students.
Well, I have a real big problem with that. Because this, well, maybe I don't understand it, but may, are alternative school students, do those students, are they removed from their normal school districts and placed in these schools because of behavioral and emotional issues? Maybe I just don't understand that part of it.
Well, I'm not sure I understand what you're talking about with alternative.
The reason I'm asking this is because if you've attended or walked, before I went back to work, I've sat in that school days and days on end watching those classrooms. And those classrooms are off the chain. They are absolutely atrocious. I've never seen anything like it in my life.
So may I say, so let's suggest this. Because I'm superintendent of schools and that means all schools.
Right.
And charters happen to be one of our mechanisms for allowing individuals to govern a school.
Right.
So when we charter with a chartering organization, when we charter, chartering organization, we go through a process. That process has its own governing board and its own chartering authority.
I understand.
Well, we have the authority. And we actually granted them the charter. A board has to take action to do that.
I love that. I love it.
All right, I want to, let me finish. And then so part of that, though, is that, so now we're in an oversight role with that school and with all other charters. And they have a set of targets that we have for that school and for all others that they must achieve. And we're working with them to resolve some of the issues that they've, that you've observed in the school. I'm meeting with their board and I'm meeting with the principal and I'm meeting with Edison, who's the chartering organization. And they're going to have to make that better or I'm going to have to make recommendations to our Board of Education to either revoke the charter, place the school on probation. And those are really only two, only two options.
See, the problem is if alternative school students are in that school, I have kids that go, I have kids that go to Heather Hills, which is also a lottery school.
Right.
They don't have alternative school students in that school.
But they should if they're lottery.
That school, that school, that possibility prep is, is set up for failure. It's set up for failure. There's no question about that.
But, but your conversation, your conversation, while it's appropriate for me as superintendent to respond, I can only respond because I'm at oversight with possibility prep.
But the lottery is managed by the county. If the lottery is managed by the county, is the lottery not managed by the county?
No. The charter school law in Maryland, the charter school law, and it's statutory, says it must be open to all students. And that's the law in Maryland. And once that organization chose to open a charter, you have to open it to all students, hence the lottery process.
Well, this is a political game that somebody's playing because my son, who was homeschooled last year, I mean, it's set up for absolute failure. It cannot succeed with these students in this class.
So what I'm suggesting is that conversation needs to occur with the Board of
I sat just at a mic just like this last week in front of the board.
Right.
And I explained the same situation.
And, and I'm going to sit with them next week when they meet with me and talk about your comments.
Okay.
And talk about your
The lottery is the problem. If alternative school students are allowed to go to this school, it will not succeed. It's set up for failure.
That's a change in state law.
I had, there was 250 parents in that room that other night that have the same concerns that I do. And I'm so, I wish that this meeting, I got a phone call last night, the automatic about this meeting, every one of them would have been here if they would have known about it.
So here's another way to do that, is that laws are made legislatively so we could talk to state legislators to have that changed.
All right.
But right now, that's open to all students. And that's, and we, I mean, and that is, they're strict about that. That's a process that we have to follow. But here's a, but well, I'll share that with you.
In the meantime, my son, who is in the seventh grade, has lost a whole semester, has lost a whole semester or a whole quarter of school.
Well, you have choices. You have choices, sir. And you can pull him out and put him back in your neighborhood school.
But he's still lost a whole quarter. He's behind a quarter of school, even if I pull him out now.
Okay, we got to get to, we got to get to the next person. I'm sorry.
I'm very, very frustrated. You have to understand that.
I understand.
And I understand that your job is very hard and I understand that you
No, it has nothing to do with hard. It's just that our authority over that charter school is at a governance role. And that is, so we will, they either have to get better or we're going to close them. And that's their way to deal with that. And I mean, but I'm glad to hear 250 people were in front of that board because that is a charter school issue. And I have to, and we have to make them get that better. But without that, you know, it's not much I can go over and say, you know, run your school this way, run your school that way because they chartered with us.
Parents can run it. We can't run it with all the others.
Right, but that's with the board. That's with their board. You have to deal with their board. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Dr. Height, for taking this time to have this town hall. I don't know of any other superintendent that has done this. My name is Tara Bonner and I want to talk about something briefly that I don't think that a lot of people speak on even in this forum. I know that we speak about all the time that our number one goal is to educate our children. And I know we even talk about safety, but as you know, safety trumps education. And so I want to briefly talk about, that's what I want to talk about, safety. That is my most concern at this point. My son is not in the public school system. I don't feel comfortable to have him in the public school system. We have always done private school and we tried public school for one year. Well, excuse me, we actually tried it for one year and two weeks. We started off at Perry Wood and we opened up at Barack Obama. We're on the opening page, cutting the ribbon and everything. However, there's some concerns in which that I have and I don't know how to present these as total questions because I think there are a lot of factors that fall into it. When I speak of safety, I'm not just speaking of just physical safety. I'm speaking of emotional, psychological, spiritual. And I think that it could be a factor as far as in teacher-children ratio, but there is a lot of behavior to go along with this gentleman and what he's saying that is just not acceptable to me as a parent in which children, if they're not feeling safe upon the behavior, the excessive behavior that's going on in these schools. And so my question number one would be, where is our, where are we right now at changing even the ratio? Because I truly do believe, because the ratio is so big, that it's impossible for the teachers to be able to manage all of the behaviors that's going on and to be able to see what's going on and to manage these behaviors in the classroom. So that's one area. There's so many areas, I mean, factors, I believe, that fall under that safety. But that is definitely one of them. And as you know, this year it has increased tremendously. And so after two weeks, I removed my son from that environment. Should I ask all of them and then, so I want to know, what are we going to do? How soon can we now even resolve that problem as number one? And then number two, I think there's other things that can be
Let me speak to number one first. Because to, so to reduce by one, the number of students in the class, to reduce by one, it's a thirteen million dollar proposition. Because the system is sized, that's, I mean, so these things cost. So to reduce by two, so every time we reduce by one, it's thirteen million dollars. So that's, that becomes a dollar and cents thing. And we can do that, but we're going to have to eliminate other services or other structures. If we're cutting a hundred million dollars a year for the last three years, that just makes that much harder to do for us. Here's the other thing I think that's important. I mean, you have to make a decision as a parent. And I, I mean, and I'm always going to advocate for parents because they're the number one decision-makers for their young people. But I also have to advocate for all of our other schools. And I know you mentioned Barack Obama. And I had the opportunity to also go back to Barack Obama Friday, I mean, Friday last year.
For the celebration?
For the dedication.
The dedication, right, right.
And I saw the third and fourth grade perform together and I thought it was astounding the performance of those young people in a short period of time. Saw the second graders perform. I thought it was tremendous. I saw the young people in the orchestra. I thought it was great. And so I say all of that to say that it's part of, this is a problem we're going to resolve together. I mean, and because we always talk about, okay, schools, what are you going to do to do this? And that becomes, that becomes hard for us to do when we only have those individuals for a short percentage of time that they're with us. And so it has to be a problem we all talk about together and we resolve together. However, I think it's equally important to really identify the solution or the problem to be solved. And let's talk about how we solve these problems. And as I indicated before, to break, to come down in class size, thirteen million dollars.
Well, not necessarily that. I've visited schools Somerset, I've visited schools in Potomac, in various other areas and other counties who actually have aides in order to help them to be able to better manage. Because I think also it improves the quality of instruction as well. And so it's not necessary just to add additional classes, but even if you need to have aides in order to assist.
Right.
Because you, okay, and while I'm sure the children did do very well, perhaps you should pop up on lunchtime and recess when there's a lot of other things going on and they're not being managed. Or even sometimes in the classroom. When, you know, because I'm not just one who speaks on problems either. You know, I like to solve problems. And so I have high demands, but I give a lot as well. And so, but I just wanted to say that. And so I have joined some organizations within the county for us to try to offer some solutions before I try to either move to another county or, you know, even think about putting my child back into the public school system. So I want you to know that there's a lot of us mothers that have those same positions in reference to why our children are not in the public school system.
No, I appreciate that. And I appreciate
And I think it starts early.
And I appreciate the attempt to solve the problem and working with other moms to help us with that. And, and so part of this is really coming together and talking about, okay, how do we do this as a community?
Exactly.
How do we do this as parents, as school officials? And how do we resolve all of these issues that we described? So thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Height.
Good evening.
My name is Mr. Donnell Barnett. I'm a first-grade teacher in Prince George's County Public Schools. I know that we are going to receive lots of money from the race to the top program. Is there a way that we can use that money to help students with their standardized tests? There are a lot of students who are excellent students in the classroom, but they have very difficulty taking standardized tests. And as you know, according to the No Child Left Behind Act, by the year 2014, all schools must be proficient in reading and math according to standardized tests. So is there a way that the county can use some of that race to the top money to go into those schools that are failing, that did not make AYP and have some tutoring services for those students who may not be good test-takers?
Yeah, great question. And my response, my immediate response is, in fact, I'm on a panel this week to talk about this whole notion about assessments. And yes, it is the short answer to your question, but I'm also an advocate for changing that assessment. And I'm not sure that it's measuring right now what we need to be measuring in terms of student progress. And one year has to predict, or at least be able to predict the level of progress the following year. So it has to build on each other. And right now, it's not an assessment system that does that. Third grade actually doesn't give you any information for fourth grade. Fourth grade doesn't give you any information for fifth. Fifth doesn't give you any information about what a child will need as a sixth or seventh grader. So we actually have to scaffold a better assessment system that really is measuring the skills, the foundational skills that students need, particularly their early grades, so that they're able to do the higher-level things in the later grades. But yes, part of the race to the top actually is for interventions for young people, both those who are some years behind and those who are not excelling in a comprehensive program. Great question.
Good evening, Superintendent Height. My name is Dr. Barnett and I've been a resident of PG County for about 10 years. And each year I've been here, my property taxes have been continually increasing, to which 50% goes toward the education of students in the county. My question is, as a physician and as a person that has taught physicians how to be doctors.
Right.
And I have a wealth of knowledge in terms of mathematics, biology, things like that. Is there a system where you can utilize people with my skills to help the students, but at the same token, reduce my property taxes?
I think if you're able to, I think you're able to help. I think that if you're able to help the students, we actually do reduce your property tax and mine. And I think that one of the things that's important is not only that we talk about how do you help students, but when I had STEM up here, so we have individuals who can teach math and who can teach science. But I'm not so sure they can teach it in a way that really exposes students to engineering or to medicine or to, and we have individuals who teach science, but I'm not so sure they can apply it to the medical field. You can do that. And so it's not just helping with students, but it's also helping us with our curriculum, looking at it from, I mean, and giving us your expertise. And talking about the types of development that we should have with teachers who are maybe in the health sciences field, who could apply those learning experiences to real-life situations like yours every day. And I was with Dr. Rebo, Sidney Rebo Howard President, and he invited us in Prince George's County to start bringing our students to the university, Howard, and really going on to the medical ward and looking at, not everything, you can expose students to everything on that, but just like I talked about the rocket launching earlier, he says, because that may be the experience that a child has that will engage that young person in the field of medicine. So no, definitely would take you up on.
Well, yeah, I wanted to know that because in our county, we have a lot of educated people. We have a lot of talented people here. You know, we have people, like my son's a lawyer, he can teach people. We need a lot of education on criminal law, a lot of education, things like that.
Right.
And it just seems like this wealth of information we have in the county is really not being utilized. And even in terms of test-taking, because obviously my whole career, that's all I ever did was take standardized tests. I've helped students raise their standardized test scores by 20 points. I mean, very similar to what these other agents have done. So we have a lot of wealth of knowledge and I think we need to advertise those particular individuals that have that talent and let them come forward. Because they may not even know, we should, at least, at least the tax situation, our property taxes, would be a great incentive to help us come forward.
So we could connect you this evening. So make sure we, make sure he gets your contact information. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Height.
Good evening.
My name is Shawn Elsavoy. I have two children, a girl and boy, who attend Walker Mill Middle School in Attica. I have two children, a girl and boy, who attend Walker Mill Middle School in the tech program. My concern tonight is an issue of safety. On September twenty-eighth, I sent a very lengthy email to the Transportation Board and ICCD you on it. And I must say, I thank you for responding because you responded, I think, within maybe two or three days. And to refresh your memory, if you wanted a copy of the email that I sent. But you assured me that Michael Dotson, who is the Director of Transportation, would look into this issue. As of today, I still have, no one has contacted me. I've called the school to talk to the vice principal, no one has contacted me. And I'm very concerned because the safety issue is with the bus driver. And I was very detailed in my email. And for no one to contact me at all and for me to have to come to this point, I mean, I don't understand, something needs to be done. And if this is going on with my child, who else's child is this going on with? And I've contacted the bus lot, they said the bus driver is not responsible to talk to the parent. You got to go through the school and you got to go through this channel and that channel. And I need some answers.
So I'll take your, I'll take your information. And then I'll follow up tomorrow.
Okay.
Okay.
So I can, I have your word on that, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. And I remember this, Ms. Elsavoy. I do remember this.
Hi, Dr. Hyde.
Hi.
I have a two-part question. And the first part is, why is there only one Blue Ribbon School in this county? And why are there, why are children from Montgomery County, Virginia allowed to go? I know their Blue Ribbon School is overcrowded, but I think Prince George's County students should have the first opportunity. Because my daughter is at a school now where she, her educational opportunity, she's not really being all the way challenged. She requested to take Japanese. The school doesn't have Japanese. She, she have over ten years of orchestra experience. The school doesn't have a really a good orchestra program. They are really-
It's a high school?
Excellent, a high school. Excellent in their margin band. I really compliment it on there. So basically, I want to know, why is there only one Blue Ribbon School in this county since we are known as the richest African-American county? And why are other students outside of this county allowed to attend the Blue Ribbon School? And I think everybody knows which school I'm referring to.
Yeah, I'm not, first of all, we have more than one. We have quite a few. And as a matter of fact, if you come into the boardroom, you, there are quite a few Blue Ribbon banners around. And then, I'm not sure, what school are you referring to?
I'm referring to Eleanor Roosevelt.
Okay.
Because my first daughter went to Eleanor Roosevelt. She got an excellent education there. She, we were proud parents this year watching her graduate from Townsend. And she, we got a transfer because of the orchestra. Our local school didn't have-
Right.
-have one. But this child, she's in the Science and Tech program. And she's very interested in the Science and Tech. And she would like to, like to learn Japanese. She's in a Spanish class in which she have told to me, told me that she feels that she's not going to learn anything because the children are very disrupted in that class.
Yeah.
And I wanted her to go to Eleanor Roosevelt so she get to get all three things. The foreign language, the Science and Tech, and the orchestra. Because she have over ten years of orchestra. And her present school, they told us when we rolled it that they have advanced orchestra class, but they don't have one. Everybody just, all, the beginners and advanced students in one class.
Okay, so to your, and I'm going to answer the other part of your question. Why do students from other counties get to enroll?
Right.
We actually have a process that prohibits individuals from other counties from enrolling. We also have a hotline-
Okay.
That if you, if you are familiar with someone who's coming from another county, you can leave that information at the school or with my office.
When did you implement that? Because when my first daughter got into Eleanor Roosevelt, she had friends that admitted that they're, that they were out of the county and they was actually paying money to go to Eleanor Roosevelt.
We do have out-of-county tuition. So people can pay tuition to come from out of the county.
Out of the, out of county, well, how come they get the first priority over someone who's paying taxes?
They actually don't get the priority. They don't get the priority, and it's only based on the availability of seats. So that would be the case. I'm not sure what year you are talking about.
She went there, just graduated, she went, it was about seven years ago.
Seven years ago?
She was going to Eleanor Roosevelt.
And I'd have to do some background checking because I've only been, this is my fifth year here. And so I don't know what the practice used to be, but it's a very strict policy around who gets to enroll in their schools, particularly those programs that are competitive and lottery and like that. And the people being able to pay out-of-county tuition can only do that if there are seats available.
So, so they have priority over the inner-county people?
No, they do not. And if, and the last time I checked, Eleanor Roosevelt has no seats available.
Yes, that's, that's what you had sent me a letter informing me of that.
They're, in fact, they're at one hundred and twenty-eight percent capacity.
Yeah, I'm a daughter. I go to Oxon Hill High School. I'm a freshman in the Science and Tech program. And one question I have is, I've been informed, I think, that last year, like in the Science and Tech program, there's like an engineering major.
Right.
Let's see, last year, well, I was informed from, let's see, I was informed that there were a few classes cut from Oxon Hill High School in terms for the engineering, you know, major in the Science and Tech program, like production systems. And so I was wondering, you know, like, is there any way those classes can be, you know, come back to the school and like, you know, what that leaves for like, people who might want to be in the engineering program this year? Like, I might want to, when I, let's see, at the end of my sophomore year, try to be in engineering. So I was, so that's my question.
So, and the question is, how can we return some of those classes back to the Science and Tech program? And in fact, I've had this conversation with your director of the Science and, the coordinator of the Science and Tech program, Mrs. Pearson. And we are, actually have a plan in place to return all of those courses because of interest, the high interest in Oxon Hill. As a matter of fact, I think that Mr. Cadet is doing a tremendous job at Oxon Hill right now. And you're right, I think they're building the music programs. And I think in a year or so, orchestra will be as high or top-notch as some of the other schools. But we just talked about that. In fact, I don't know if you were there, I was at Oxon Hill with the governor. And we were there that day. And we were talking about the classes that they lost that we will be returning.
But for her, by, by the time those programs get there, she'll be almost a junior, senior.
No, this will be next year.
Next year?
Yes. Yes. Thank you.
My name is Consette Jefferson. I have a son in sixth grade at Possibility Prep. When I listened to your Strive for Five presentation, the first one was about high student achievement, where you said you're committed to equipping students with the required knowledge, skills, whatever. One, school is now, what, in the seventh week?
That's correct.
My son was probably in project school. I took him out of public school because he was being bullied and hurt, and I was getting no assistance from the principal. I put him back into public school now. He has been in school for seven weeks. We just got computers. They finally just got somebody to set them up, and they still don't work. My son cannot access, cannot, cannot get on the computers. He's been given a code which doesn't work. So the person came to the school, supposedly all the computers work. I even was in the school today with the teacher, and there are three computers in the classroom, but there's no IPP, IP code. So she can't even get on there to input information for school mats. When, and so they're now waiting for somebody to come back from Board of Education to image these computers. And I have a problem with that, it's like, it's now seven weeks. But it took seven weeks to get somebody there. Is it going to take another seven weeks before somebody else comes back? So in fourteen weeks, you'll have no use of computers? I don't think that's acceptable.
Well, and-
Um, two-
Okay, can I respond to one?
Sure.
So one was that the system, the school ordered computers.
Right.
The computers came after the year started.
Right.
And within five days after we got the request, we had the computers set up. I don't know if they were set up incorrectly. I'm hearing you say they were set up incorrectly. That was several-
I don't know if they're set up incorrectly.
Okay.
They were set up because I know that the principal was there the Saturday, and teachers were there, and parents came, and we all helped.
Okay.
But they're not working.
Okay.
So the person, after they were set up, a person came from Board of Education to image the computers, which is, at that point in time, we were then able to get onto school mats. But in the classroom, he's supposed to go on the computer, he's supposed to be able to perform the work, and he can't. There's some kids who came from PG Public School, their codes work. He's not coming from PG Public School.
So we have to, so that's, so we have to help you with that.
Yeah.
We have to help you with that. And, Mr. Presley? We have, so I want to, I want to deal with the computer thing because that's a different issue. And that's a school max issue, we should help you with that. We have to take your information and make sure we help. And you, so number two?
All right. All these schools, both charter and public, are under the same umbrella. Is that my understanding?
That's correct.
Okay.
But our governance for charters are different.
That's fine.
Yes.
But money is going public school and charter schools from, out of your budget.
But we, but-
I know that you reduced-
But those monies go to the charter school board.
I understand. You reduced, you reduced funding and to make those cuts that you're talking about.
Right.
And one of the major cuts you did was transportation.
That's correct.
Okay. If you're transporting public school system and they're under the same umbrella, charter schools should get transportation too. All's kids need to reach the school. My son had to, we were on the public bus. And the public bus went on strike. So because of the up and down of that, he was getting to school late. I mean, we were at the bus stop from seven in the morning. The bus didn't come until nine fifteen. He's lost about a chunk of his day. If he had been offered busing, wouldn't have been a problem. And I don't think it's fair that I'm paying the same amount of property tax. Yes, I went on the website and when, when we were looking at schools to come back, we went the lottery, we entered the lottery not only for Possibility Prep, but we also entered for different high, middle schools that were already in there. We didn't get placed in the middle schools because of the lottery. We got Possibility Prep. I think if I'm paying the same amount of taxes as other parents, I should be offered the same services. Because it's the same education. I need the children to get there.
Right.
And you talked about the safe school. Then I need to know, what are you, you offered, you talked about your different STEM programs and the schools and whatever? If the money that was given to the school has been now taken to rent buses so that our children can get to school, there is now no money for these field trips that you're taking about? Because they had plans for children to be able to go to the college campus. Are you now going to provide money for us to get the children to, on field trips so that they're having the same benefits that you're offering your public school students? Since money was taken out of the budget and now had to be put in for transportation?
So when we choose, so when, when you choose a charter, and you chose a charter-
I did.
There's funding that we give to the charters.
Okay.
And those funds are based on an amount that the state requires us to give to the charter for every student. And I talked late earlier about how we hope that we want a student-based budgeting. I actually like that, that they actually, you enroll four hundred kids, you get the state equivalent of that money for every, for every child.
Right.
The state doesn't require, the state does not require us to provide transportation for charters. It does, it does not. We provide transportation to your boundary.
You're giving the same amount of money to public schools for, per child.
And we provide money.
The same amount to charter per child, but you're also providing transportation for public schools.
No, the transportation money is in that per pupil cost. It's in the per pupil cost. It's not additional. And so it's part of why it's so hard inside of the state of Maryland to open a charter because they have to take care of a lease, they have to provide transportation in most cases. And they're trying to do all of those things that the comprehensive school does. And it just, we already have our buildings. So we have this building. It doesn't, it costs us to run this building. But we don't, we don't pay a lease payment each month on this building.
Okay.
Well, the charter school does. It has to pay a lease payment every month. So that's part of the structure that is how we fund charters. But that's money we give to them.
Right.
And they decide to do with their money what they choose to do with it. At the end of the day, we hold them accountable for the outcomes.
So these other programs that you're talking about, where you're planning to have field trips, is that also coming out of that per capita amount in public schools?
Well, I did say in Title I, and that's Title I funds. I said at Title I schools.
Will any of this money that you're now receiving from the race be applied to, be going towards charter schools or only public schools?
Only if it increases the formula for all students.
Okay.
Then we would pass that on to charter.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have a couple of things. One, when you talk about teacher qualification, what is the school system doing to work with the universities? Because the thing that I find very hard to comprehend is, you know, after four years, and some people, six years of rigorous work in a, at a university, that we have this great number of teachers coming out not qualified to be in a classroom. And so, and if that is the case, what are we doing to address it at the higher education level? Because, you know, we continue to ignore these trickle-down things. And then when it impacts us, we want to start pointing fingers. So what are we doing so that it's not so much? Because my daughter-in-law is a teacher. And so I, for me, it's very personal now. So I would like to know, what are you doing in that area so that we have teachers coming out highly qualified? When my daughter-in-law graduated from her university in North Carolina, she came out with having passed Praxis One, Praxis Two, and she was considered highly qualified. Therefore, her focus could be on other staff development, things that needed to be done, instead of spending her waking at her, what little time she had left, trying to study for Praxis One.
Right.
So what are we doing in Maryland to resolve that? First and foremost, as part of a reform. Second, with the reforms, when I was looking at the testing data up on the state website, when I look at the, our overall profile in Prince George's County, we do not meet AYP for math or reading for African-Americans, Hispanics, free and reduced lunch, special education, and limited English proficient students, which is most of our population. So that means kids going into middle school are not reading on grade level and are not performing basic math, they have no basic math skills. So if that's the case, why are we putting so much focus on reforming in middle school? Because basically what you're telling me is that we're going to continue to look at remedial programs instead of cutting this thing off where it's beginning, at the root. And that's making sure that we have a rigorous curriculum, pre-K through three, so that during that time, when they are learning to read, they can begin the fourth grade to start reading to learn.
Right.
The other thing that I have, we keep saying that this takes a community to get this thing done. But it seems like all of this additional services keep being dumped in the school system. Social services, domestic violence, everything keeps being dumped here. So what is the school system going to start doing? And they've had, they had an article last year, which was a major article about the out-of-school factors that impact education. What are we not doing in Prince George's County? Where we see it's happening in other counties, where they are working with their local government, and they are working with the local organizations so that everybody is carrying their load. We can't get classroom funding because too much money is being spent at the central office, bringing in PhDs and other people in, in other areas that are non-academic. So, I would like to see what specifically the school system is doing to address that. And AP courses, if we're going to set standards, we need to leave standards in place. We cannot worry about saying, well, we don't want kids to feel like they are being left out. If a child is not ready for AP courses, that child should not be in an AP course class. My daughter just came up, my daughter's a senior, she graduated from Largo in two thousand and seven. She's a senior at her, uh, college. When I told her that AP courses had been opened up for whoever desires, she was upset because she said, "Mom, I remember my last year at Largo, when something like that happened, we were doing AP chemistry and there were kids that didn't know basic chemistry." And so, it slowed the class down, and then it slows, the teacher cannot be as effective because the teacher has to slow down her pacing schedule. And then the minute kids don't learn, again, you're setting teachers up to be blamed for failure, you're setting administrators up to be blamed for failure, and then you're, you're setting that student up to, whatever confidence they may have can be totally lost. So, standards, we have got to stay with our standards, and we cannot break to the pressure of the public. And then the last thing is, and this is something that I have never seen done in the school system, and I've had three kids come through this system. Um, and that is having someone from the school system to sit down and give us a line-by-line explanation of the budget. Even if you got to do it in a series of, of workshops so that we understand where our money is going. Because it seems like, you know, you said that there were eight hundred positions that were cut, but only two hundred led to job losses. Well, that tells me sixty percent of those positions weren't even filled.
That's correct.
So, that just means you lost two hundred, but where? Were they the parent liaisons? That was a hundred and nineteen, right there. So, that tells me it may not have been in the classroom. So, we need to get definitive information about the budget and how this money's being spent.
Yeah. So, um, I'll answer your, I'll answer your last question first because I think this is really important. And, because there's been a lot of questions about budget. And one of the reasons we tried to change our budget process is so that the layperson could actually go in, look at every category, determine what was there a year ago, what was there this year, and what was the final amount. And so, in every department, individuals can see that. And that book is available, we'll be glad to provide it for you, or it's available online. And we put it online so that everyone had the opportunity to go in, look at the core service, look at the positions that were there a year ago, look at the positions that are there this year, and the number that changed. Um, and that's in every department. Sure. And that's a different question. So, that's the value that each position, so I would, as superintendent, I would say we can't lose any positions. We can't lose any. But when you have a hundred million dollars less than you had the previous year, then you have to make hard decisions based on the elimination of those monies. You did mention AYP, I want to talk about that for a second. Because you said that, and you named some categories and some were in some grades and some were in other grades. That was the whole overall, that was the overall. And, and I don't have that information in front of me, but I do think it's really important to talk about. Six years ago, at elementary reading, third through fifth grade, we were at fifty-one percent proficient. And this past year, that number was up around eighty. And the reason I say that is because I think it's important to also communicate the progress of the system over that same period of time. What's happening with No Child Left Behind is that every year, you get closer to twenty fourteen, there is a new or higher standard that must meet the bar. And in twenty fourteen, as you heard the gentleman who's a teacher say, one hundred percent of the students, based on the current No Child Left Behind, must be proficient or no schools, unless they have a hundred percent, meeting all of those criteria, that they will meet AYP. Oh, yeah, no, oh, yeah, and that's a, you're right, you're right. And thank you for reminding me of that. Thank you for reminding me of that. And if you look at our larger subject group, that subgroup, it really becomes special ed. And inside of that large special ed subgroup, there are African-American students, there are, there are LEP students, um, and there are students that are in circumstances of poverty. And so, many of them are representing the same students, and all of those students are high-need students. And I didn't say that, remember, I talked about interventions. I didn't say remediation, that was your word. The remediation is if we build, if we continue to develop individual skills at a grade level. And let's say that a child is in the tenth grade, they're reading on the second grade level, I'm using this hypothetically. And we're trying to build that child's skills from second to third grade, but the child's sitting in high school. All right, that's a remedial thing that will not work because we're not going to prepare that child to do anything. So, you're right, we have to look at how we build a curriculum that accelerates everyone. And you, you, your question couldn't, I mean, your comments couldn't have been more on point. The work that we do at second grade around readiness, if students are leaving second grade prepared to read or meeting those standards, then we already know they stand a much better, much better chance. But we also know this, if they're attending regularly elementary school, they also stand a much better chance to be successful in middle, in high school. And if, in fact, we have an engaged parent, that's the third part, they even have a more. And so, it's not just, because you're right, we have all of the accountability. When we're not developing the teachers, we're just hiring them. And nothing is really happening at the institutions that are developing these individuals. But that was the answer to your question, but, Ms. Winfield, that was the answer to your question. But to your question, we do have a situation now, and most of those individuals either become paras for us, paraprofessionals, or substitute teachers, and then they work inside of classrooms. They can mentor now, many choose not to because they would rather go and be paid for the work.
I mean, they could get credits, have you partnered with these universities?
We do that now, we have, um...
So, is it not across the board? Because I don't know why my son's got thirty-four kids.
That's a budget, that's, that's more of a budget dilemma than anything else. That's not a, that's not a connecting people to schools issue. That's a budget issue. We went up by two in all of the classes, and that did impact many of our elementary schools, particularly those that are, that were smaller. Um, the smaller schools, it impacted them more because they may have had smaller classes in other grades and in larger classes in one grade, and it's hard for us to have teachers across various grades.
So, is it up to the school to make that partnership with the university? Or is that something that you've put in place where they can say, "Hey, we've got this many kids, we need an aid"?
Yeah, we have that, we have them, they're called professional development schools. And we have those at a lot of our schools, and I thought Matter Penile was one.
High school? They have high school students?
No, they do not have high school.
I'm, I'm looking for college students to come in.
No, they do not have, these are college students.
Okay, well, I'll check back with them because when I spoke with them, they were saying high school students were coming.
Well, I don't know if Matter Penile is one of our professional development schools, but we have professional development schools that have young people from Bowie State, University of Maryland.
Which I was told the Bowie State, they're partnering with Bowie Schools.
They, most of them are Bowie Schools, but we have.
So, it's kind of unequitable.
We have University of Maryland down in Oxon Hill and at Fort Washington. We have Towson up toward the north. We are actually working with a partnership with Howard, also to get schools on the southern end of the county. We haven't, um, we haven't formulated that agreement yet.
Okay.
But those are the, those are called PDS schools.
PDS?
Yes.
Okay, and when are you going to have this available, the other information on the website?
I'm looking at staff, they're. Within a couple of months, okay.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, Dr. Height, my name is Jenny Amrani. I have two students at Lake Arbor Elementary, and I'm the PTA president there. And, um, I think the other young lady just answered my question because I was going to ask about the partnerships with the colleges as far as the internships or externships that they have to do. Is that what you're referring to when they come? When they're from the colleges?
Yes, that's correct.
And, and this is, this is already out there, this program's out there, and the, the schools can utilize it or not utilize it? Is that what, what the deal is?
I'm sorry?
Is this program's already out there and the principals know to utilize it, or do they, is there some kind of?
No, these are formal partnerships.
It's a formal partnership, okay.
Yeah, these are formal partnerships.
And, and the, the principal just goes and steps through and kind of, okay. And then I, my other question was, um, I don't understand, how, how can you account for the, the wild range of, um, student population in some of the elementary schools? I know my school has about eight hundred and fifty students, and it's elementary. And then this, other schools, is it there's three hundred or four hundred? And is it just sheer population in that area? Is it people jumping the boundaries and busting, you know, basically scamming the systems?
There's generally populations in the area.
Really?
And some are based on the size of the school as well. So, there's some elementary schools that are small, some that are much larger, some that are overcrowded. And we tried to shift in phases one and two, the boundaries really to ameliorate some of that. But we were able to do it in some places, but not in others.
Is that still on the table for coming up again, rearranging boundaries?
We're always looking at adjustments where we can adjust. And the, the trick is really, what is the population of the adjacent schools? And so, if the adjacent schools, they may have four hundred students, but if they're at capacity, then it's harder for us to move more students there, although one school has eight hundred and one has four. So, we have to look at seats available versus state-weighted capacity.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Height.
Good evening.
My name is Crystal Harold, and I have three boys here in the county. Two in elementary school and one in high school. And my question is regarding drugs and violence in the high school. My son is fifteen years old, he has been on the, he's always been on the honor roll. He plays three sports and has a three-point-five GPA. I'm concerned that children who get away with drugs and violence in the school system are basically setting an example or sending a message to those that are doing the right things that it's acceptable. And the example is, my son went, um, this was a few months ago, he was assaulted in our neighborhood by another student. This took place directly across the street from my home, in front of my five-year-old and my eight-year-old, where this, this other teenager came up behind my son and tried to rob him. I called the police because he threatened my son. Um, when the police came, they indicated since they go to the same school that I had to go through the school system. I really didn't know how that was going to work since it didn't happen on school grounds. So, went to the school, long story short, the story is, met with the administrators and the security office. We're all in, the boy's parents, my husband and I wanted to give the parents an opportunity to come and address this issue. We didn't just want to throw away someone else's son. In the meeting, the child dropped his drugs on the floor. I graduated from high school twenty-five years ago. In my day, drugs on school property, you were out of there. Okay, to this day, this child is still walking the school grounds with my son. We have since gone to court because I called the police, and I had to go through that system. Um, when I contacted the school because I was really bothered that this child could still walk the hallways and see my son, my son basically has to, you know, watch his back. Although, my son did, you know, take care of himself and handle himself because he has two younger brothers there, and he had to protect himself, and he didn't want to have his son, his brothers witness this.
Right.
So, still to this day, this happened a few months ago, we went to court, like I said, and they said that he will be monitored. But when I called the school to find out a status as to what will happen to this child, why is he still at the school, and they explained to me that, well, they confused me. They thought I was the other parent, the mother that didn't show up. Now, the father was there, I understand, we all have to work. But he confused me, confused me with the other parents, although I identified myself, and said, "Ma'am, your child is a good child, it really wasn't a lot of drugs." So, we basically didn't write him up. Okay, so my question is, and although I had to explain to him, "Excuse me, you have the wrong person."
Right.
So...
So, your question should have been to my office that day.
Well, let me tell you this, I went up to the school because I am heated about now, my husband and I. We're in this public school systems, talking to my in-laws who are educators in Hampton, Virginia. And they said the same thing, "He should have been out of there." Well, when I went and I spoke to the administrators, they explained that this is a policy that's above them, whereas basically it wasn't a lot of drugs to, with intent to distribute. Who makes that decision? They said it was basically, you know, that has to come from up above. So, you know, although this happened a few months. So, you know, although this happened a few months ago, we went to court, like I said, and he's being monitored, and I think he has to wear a bracelet. But he still goes to the school with my son. My son is still doing his thing, performing the way that he should be. But as a parent, I can't just sit and say, okay, well, that was it. You were here tonight, this is my opportunity to ask you the question. What is the policy here? Just because you have a little bit of drugs, it's okay?
No. Policy is real clear. Policy is real clear around drugs. And it's in the code of student conduct. Most of you parents have received that. We've received it. We've seen it. It doesn't say, "A little bit of drugs." It says, "Drugs."
That's what I thought.
And so, it's a shame that we're having to do this or talk about this in a public forum because I would, I suspect, or would expect that if that is happening at our schools, we have to hear about that in order to do something about that. And three months after the fact is a problem because now we have a young man or walking around. Now, the other thing is this. With respect to the fight and, and what happened in your neighborhood, it's harder for the schools to really address that issue.
Right. And that's what I didn't understand when the police officer came. He said, well, they can give you the name and the address. I said, what, what, where are they going to give me the information of this child? Because that didn't happen on school grounds.
Yeah, we can't give you that.
Well, then, that's when you call, they should call us, and I'll let them know. I mean, it was just crazy that I had to go through all of those steps. But we did it. We, my son knows the child. They went to Lake Arbor together.
So, we'll collect more information from you in terms of the respective school.
Okay.
So, we can deal with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Height. Damian Myers again. My question, while a lot of the issues have been addressed... I spoke at the school, school board meeting before.
Okay, okay, got it, okay, got it.
I, I've, I've listened, and I've listened to a lot of issues be addressed. Mine tonight is very, very pointed, very current and recent. I spoke to the school board. I've diligently worked with the principal, the high school consortium for the superintendent, the freshman class administrators, the school. We're about to get report cards for the first nine weeks. I have been sent home a student improvement process for my daughter, who's in ninth grade at Northwestern, who has all As and one C in one course, which I have yet to receive a School Max code to see what's going on in the class. It peeves me because in emailing the, the teacher after receiving this improvement process, calling the teacher, calling the school, calling the principal, the guidance counselors, using the process that was said to me via the internet, I have still not gotten adequate response, a returned phone call, a returned email, a letter, a person to come and knock on my door about resolving the issue. No access to School Max. The teacher blatantly responded...
You don't have access to School Max?
I don't have access now that there's my daughter.
Okay.
My, my, my response by the teacher was, "See School Max." When a parent comes to a teacher and asks you, what is my child doing wrong? What can I do as a parent? And your response is to go see School Max? That frightens me. If we are talking about commitment to parents and partnering, and you have an involved parent who's there, who shows up to PTA meetings...
We got it, we got it, we got it. Yeah.
That, that to me is a concern.
Sure.
The other concern is, as the other parents have stated, violence. My child goes to Northwestern High School. There is a wooded area behind the school. There is no fence. There is gang activity in between the wooded area and the school. They run through the school as the cops are chasing them. My child is in that school. He or she and all the other students are now impacted. We've got to start doing some things to implement the school. Asking the principal, what has been done? The response is, it's not in the school's budget. I'm sorry. If safety can't be in the school budget, I don't know what we can do, or what we are doing, to better support our kids.
Yeah. So, we have a, we have a gang task force that works with Northwestern. And I'm sorry, the principal didn't know that information to be able to tell you that. And then, the other thing is, I'm sure you know Officer Rodowski? And Officer Rodowski is actually assigned by Hyattsville at Northwestern. He's one of the best school resource officers we have. He's very familiar with that place, that area that you're talking about, and has really communicated to the gang task force that issue. So, they're out and about and in that area, really trying to help. And I'm familiar with the incident that you reported. And I'm, I'm sorry you didn't get more information about that from the principal. What, School Max, we, I think we talked about that before. There's some issues that we have to resolve. And then, once we resolve those issues, I don't know why we just cannot give you a password so that you have exposure to School Max. I know, I get, and, and the other part is, then the teacher has to give you that information.
... I've had no communication. I did not go to the school. I've been to the school five times. And this time, from the time the school opened up until now, no one has said to me, Mr. Myers, please give us six weeks to get this resolved. Mr. Myers will have it for you by this time. There's no communication. And for a person who is a parent, who's working, the school should be able to say, this is the time that we'll be able to answer this. I've asked the principal on three occasions, Saturday being one. What deadline can you give me to have this issue resolved? I've still not got it. I've sent an email today, and I've still not got the response.
So, why don't you send, so why don't you send the email to me?
You said you should see a, a comment.
And you've used it, and it hasn't resulted in it.
Correct. And so, I'm here.
I appreciate that. But you did send an email. So, but thank you. Thank you. Last two.
Good evening.
I'm good, sir. How about you?
All right, great. I want to talk about, I got three issues. The first one, at Surrattrell, it just came to my attention that, you know, we added our special ed unit on the back with a severe handicap.
Right.
We went from 35 to 54 this year. I just found out that we're going to get additional 10 next year, which will take us to 64. And they are going to put a temporary trailer in the back for them to use. That is totally unacceptable because these are severe kids that have TPI damage. They're there to the age of 21. And we had the program really manage well up until this year. One of the classrooms is too small, really, for the teachers to do the job they're doing. And they're doing a wonderful job with the space that they have. But to put a temporary trailer and have severe people that, that have tubes, that have to be fed, in that trailer outside of the building, to me, is not acceptable to add 10 more. Take that population, take that population up. So, I'd like you to look into that, and we're going to fight hard for that not to happen because those kids are dear to my heart.
And so, I mean, the not to happen is at that school or in that situation?
In that situation.
Oh, no, I agree with that. Okay.
Temporary trailer.
Okay.
Okay. Because, and the other, I heard a person tonight talk about the violence in, in the school and things like that. One interesting thing that happened the other day when I was at the school, we was in a classroom, and I watched the kids that sat there on the cell phones, iPods, and things like that. You have a real challenge with that issue. You changed the policy that said there's no cell phones allowed in, in, on, in the school. But we need follow-through with that policy. The administrators need to strictly enforce that policy. The other issue that parents have brought to my attention as I travel, as you know, I travel throughout the county.
Right.
Is the eight-day, B-day schedule. Parents are not on an eight-day, B-day schedule at work. And it's hard for them to follow the homework. And the mod, the 90-minute mod. To have a child 90 minutes in a mod or to sit there, and I, and I watch that very carefully. Their retention span is not that long to just sit there. And then, they lose it. And then, they shift their attention to the app, a thing that's attractive. And that's an uphill fight for you. So, maybe we need to look at shorting those mods, going back to eight-by-eight rather than the long 90-minute mods that, that we have now. Because when kids come back to school for the summer break, you lose too much retraining them, or relearning, or reteaching them things that they've learned, and you're into almost a first-report card period. So, and we already talked about extended days. But maybe we're no longer in this agrarian farm situation. And we should seriously look at having year-round school where kids are constantly going to school. And that is some, some conversation that we should have. On that note, that's a point.
So, I appreciate that. Thank you. And very familiar with the extended day, extended-year models. Mr. Ross, I did my dissertation on year-round schools.
Okay. Okay, Dr. Height. Thank you for letting me speak again. But I actually had a question with regards to listening about the testing. One of the major concerns I have with the system is, as Ms. Wingfield stated, the lowering of standards. For example, if a child is testing proficient in our prop, in our school system, proficient doesn't necessarily mean, for example, if the child's in the sixth grade, that they're, they're actually on a sixth-grade level. But the word proficient, to those of us who grew up in the school system with the education, means that the child is working at their level proficiently. Now, if you have a two-year gap in there, we're already behind the curve ball. So, when you're seeing a child is proficient, and the child's in the sixth grade, but the child's testing at the low end of the fourth grade, but they can hit proficient because you're a two-year gap, we're already behind the, the A-ball. There's something wrong with that. And I don't think even most parents understand. Your child being proficient doesn't mean they're on grade level. So, as she was saying, we got to fix that to get the kids at their grade level. Proficient should mean you're proficient at your grade level, not two grades behind.
Yes. So, let's, let's, let's be clear. Proficient doesn't mean college-ready.
No, proficient doesn't mean...
Proficient doesn't mean college-ready. Proficient is a testing term applied by MSDE. Proficient, and that's one reason we're actually starting to measure the increase in students going in advance because we think that that's a truer measure. However, we need to talk about college readiness at all grade levels, which means that we start have mechanisms,